This is episode 731 of the Rio Grande Foundation's Tipping Point, New Mexico. I'm Paul Guessing.
And I'm Wally Drenmeister.
I'm president of the Rio Grande Foundation, New Mexico's free market think tank. You can find out more about the foundation at rio grandefoundation.org. Wally, there was an appearance by none other than Michelle Lujan Grisham at on Face the Nation over the weekend. And as this governor is wont to do, she likes to engage in, we'll generously call it hyperbole. Uh, we could also call it obfuscation or making things up again. We could trade those various words off. Now, she was CBS News is the face of the nation station. Margaret Brennan was the interview. And uh, she, it's very strange. So we're just going to go through a few of the things that she said. The governor did not have a particularly long interview, but off complaining things that Dr. Oz, I think he's the head of CMS, if I'm not mistaken, which is the head, the bureau that deals with Microsoft. And the governor goes off on paperwork of all things. Now, I happen to agree. Paperwork and healthcare and health insurance and government is too much. But here's, here's a brief snippet of what she says. There's no way to implement this. It's more paperwork for everyone. It's more paperwork for the federal government, for state governments, for county governments, for local hospitals, independent providers. And you know what Americans really hate, Margaret? When you go to your primary care physician and you spend 20 minutes sitting at the chair, not even on the exam table while they're inputting data into a computer. Uh, so this doesn't make any sense. Yeah, I mean, I agree with her, uh, not a hundred percent, a thousand percent here.
Well, it's computer work, not paperwork, but that's a quibble.
That's true. That's true. Although we, we, the people do fill out a lot of forms.
Oh, that, that is true. They still do use a lot of paper and a lot of that came from Obamacare, which I think, you know, it's right. That's where it came from. It didn't come from anything recently.
Now, interestingly enough, and uh, the Trump administration, Donald Trump just signed an executive order. Are only effective as they are actually implemented and they're legal and all these kinds of things. And you know, President Trump has definitely spent a lot of time in his first six, seven months in office on executive orders. But just within the last several days, uh, the Trump administration's executive order on data sharing. That to hopefully be not only an effort to improve upon that, uh, that data problem, but the paperwork problem associated with it. Now, again, executive orders are what they are. They're not a force of law. In a real way, they can be overturned. They can be ignored. They can, the courts can come back and say, no, that you can't do this. And there are other laws, HIPAA laws. I'm not going to presume to be an expert on medical data safety, uh, safety and security. But, uh, I mean, I do agree with the governor, but what the heck is she doing or talking about? There, there's no there there when it comes to what Michelle Lujan Grisham is actually talking about. You know?
Yeah. Why that one? Did, is there a thing they wanted to, you know, did the Ds want to beat up on Trump with 50 issues over the weekend? And they just divvied them out to all of their spokespeople and she got that one?
I, I don't know. Yeah. And it's a, there, there's a lot of things that the left has criticized President Trump about or, you know, for lack of action or actions in a wrong direction. Medical paperwork is just a very odd one. And you know, I would love to see a more market driven healthcare system. Is she saying that government healthcare models like Medicaid don't have as much paperwork? I wouldn't know. I've never been on Medicaid, so I can't say. But I can't imagine knowing what I do about the government, that that is a entity that has less paperwork than the private sector. But anyway, uh, we'll, we'll move on. And by the way, uh, at airs of enchantment.com, you can see some of the points that we make and also read the transcript or watch the interview that the governor did. So one of the other areas that, that our dear governor focused on was poverty. And she said, we need to move people out of poverty. Now, what the heck, uh, is she talking about here? Because, uh, the governor has been in charge of New Mexico government for seven years. And we've seen nothing done with our oil and gas boom, with our state's economy in terms of reforming it to improve upon poverty. Poverty, if you look at the data, kind of goes and ebbs and flows. It's a little, it's a little like a wave, a gentle wave. And, uh, yeah, the state has seen a slight decline in poverty, but it only is reflective of federal, uh, poverty kind of numbers. It's not like New Mexico is going way down and the federal government's staying the same. We haven't done anything at the state level to address poverty. So, uh, yes, Wally, poverty.
Oh man, so I don't know, when they asked Ronald Reagan about the war on poverty, he said poverty won. And you know, it's one of those things that I don't know, these things where you attack concepts, you know what I mean? We're going to fight poverty. Okay. How do you do that? Well, uh, you have people that good, have good educations. You have a, a situation where people want to come to your state or stay in your state to start and grow businesses. You have people that, uh, work in those businesses and become successful. And all those things reduce poverty. As you kind of allude to Paul, you can give people a lot of money and that gets them out of poverty. But is that really, really what, what we're talking about here? And so, yeah, it's, uh, it's one of those things. It's almost like, uh, saying, how do you win a basketball game? You score more points than the other team, but that's not too actionable. And so it's one of those things, yeah, it's easy to say, who would say that we want less poverty? Everyone does, but it's like, what are you doing about it? What does that really mean, uh, to you and the state and a policy by policy basis? You know, is it helping or is it hurting?
Yeah, it would be nice if the governor, you know, actually spent a few minutes not talking about the lie of that we reduced child poverty by changing the data where we assess this. As we talked about, you can go look that up on previous episodes as well as, uh, I think a blog post and a opinion piece. The governor claims, uh, and accurately, we are New Mexico in really good financial shape. Now, where she goes off the deep end is she says, that takes planning and effort. Sure, Governor.
Sit there and cash the checks, baby.
Yeah. It also requires a brand new oil and gas discoveries pouring billions of dollars annually. Not billions, new billions of dollars annually into New Mexico's budget. Uh, of course, the governor's been attacking the industry every step of the way. I'm not sure if there's anything there to expound upon, but yeah, it's a, it's the, it's like, you know, the liberal critique of Donald Trump or any rich person. Oh, they were born on third base. Well, when New Mexico, uh, under your leadership is just getting money out of one of the biggest oil and gas booms in the history of our nation. You're not exactly doing anything magnificent there, Governor.
Well, you know, Paul, it's, it's funny. If, uh, New Mexico, in a lot of ways, was born economically on third base with their oil and gas industry. But you know, to use a bad baseball metaphor that I just now created, we have a runner on third base, no outs, and the hitter hits a, uh, hits a shot right up the middle and the, the runner on third base runs towards second base and gets tagged out. So that's what we're doing. So yes, we have a lot of advantages in our state, but we have managed to buy, by policy, kind of take those and make them where they're not only in, on a net, doesn't put us even in the, uh, the realm of economic success with our surrounding states.
Now, this one, this one is probably the, uh, the biggest whopper, the single biggest fact that she just absolutely destroys. And listen to this. You know, our job projections, this is quoting directly from the governor. Presumably she's talking about New Mexico, continue to be met and exceed unlike the federal jobs report, which is going in the opposite direction. So I don't know where all these jobs are going to be in this anemic economy. Okay, that's debatable, but fair point. But here's where she really goes off the rails. I mean, it's so bad. The last time it was this bad, I was in college and let me tell you, that was a very long time ago. Now, that is just absolutely the biggest lie you can imagine. You know, unless the governor was in college in 2008 during the massive economic crisis that this country went through in 08. And there's other times where you could at least say, well, uh, I mean, we've seen recessions. We've seen drops in job creation, et cetera. But to say that the US economy or the US jobs numbers are the worst they've been since she was in college? I mean, I, I forget the woman's somewhere in the 60 year old range. She's been around for a lot of downturns in the American economy. I'm not a fan of the tariff policy of the Trump administration, but to say that the job numbers were somehow anywhere close to what we saw during COVID, the, the first several months of COVID, when the economy shut down or in 2008 is just absolutely ludicrous.
Well, that, that is an interesting point for her to make, you know? What does she mean? And that's, this is one of those, the absolute number of jobs in New Mexico, that's largely dependent on, um, the population of the state. And does she mean unemployment? You know, if she means unemployment rate, uh, no way, you know what I mean? It's relatively low. Now, uh, as we've talked many times, uh, on the podcast, Paul, New Mexico has a low workforce participation rate. So a lot of our people don't work and they're not in the unemployment rate because they're not looking for jobs. So, you know, all of these things are, are kind of related, but again, just a little bit, a little bit. Inexact, what did she really mean? And you know, what is, uh, what, what are we doing about it? What is the policy? And it's one of those things, uh, if you misdiagnose the problem, I bet your prescription is not going to hit the mark.
Yeah, that may be my biggest obstacle to running for political office is my innate love of exact language.
Yeah.
Now, exact language is generally a good thing. It protects you against people misinterpreting things. And, uh, it makes it clear what you're actually talking about. And one of the big ones is, you know, when you say they or you or y'all, those can be misconstrued in many different ways to make your verbiage come back at you in a, in a harmful way. But, uh, she does speak, I mean, it's not Kamala Harris level word salad, but it's definitely not very clear. And you know, while Trump speaks very simply, uh, generally speaking, you can understand a lot of what he has to say, although, uh, he's obviously had his troubles occasionally in some of his kind of freewheeling talks where he, uh, he says things that have gotten him into trouble in the past. But, uh, the governor just kind of throws things against the wall sometimes.
Yeah. And you know, an example, Paul, of political speeches, we, they talk in politics a lot about new ideas. Well, an idea doesn't do anything. An idea that's turned into a policy that's then implemented might. But you know, there is an example. It's like the idea itself, it's like I've had, I had a thousand ideas yesterday of which I may be acted on two of them. So the other, uh, 998 don't mean anything. So that's, that's an example, but yes. And also the, when they, it's interesting. So they is one of those that we're, we, we lack the power. That's the, they are doing this to us. And you know, uh, there's plenty of they are doing this to us. If you're say a small business owner in New Mexico or, you know, whatever. But when you're the governor, the, uh, they doesn't, they doesn't have quite the sting. You know what I mean? You're the governor of the state of New Mexico, you know, uh, what? So if you have no power, that maybe, uh, has more to say about you than it does about what quote unquote they are doing.
Yeah. And a perfect example in this, and the last example I'll go through is, uh, the governor claims Susanna Martinez canceled behavioral health. Now, what she means of course is she canceled, uh, about a dozen or so contracts with Medicaid providers and behavioral health. And we're not going to rehash that particular example. And it's kind of the catchall, you know? The current administration in Washington, whoever that is, is always going to have their critiques of the previous administration and their approach to certain issues and say, you know, under the other guy, it was really horrible and this, that, and the other regard. Whether you're actually doing anything about it is the open question. Well, uh, so what Martinez did, uh, was cancel these contracts. Lujan Grisham, uh, says, you know, she's been busily working over the last seven years as the powerful governor of New Mexico to solve this problem. Now, a June 2025 source, New Mexico report, I believe that we talked about on, uh, the show, noted that while there's been a rise in the number of people accessing mental health services in New Mexico, utilization data indicates that it's not necessarily translating into better outcomes. Now, I am no expert on Medicaid and behavioral health and all of its ins and outs. But it is obviously one thing to say, we're going to create a government program or we're going to restore a government program. And we are going to pump money into it. We're going to hire these various professionals and spend a lot of money. And I know that that was a big piece of legislation in the 2025 legislative session. I believe dedicate a billion dollars additional. There were several bills relating to, uh, behavioral health. But it is obviously another thing entirely to, uh, reform the system and actually create better, uh, you know, results and better outcomes. So I don't know if you have anything to add on that, but, uh, yeah. I, I kind of, uh, back at, back in the, you know, Martinez administration, you know, I, the, the left really went crazy talking about how, oh, the governor canceled these, uh, behavioral health contracts. And you know, the companies were, uh, I guess absolved of any wrongdoing. But, uh, it, you know, whether this, the system actually helps people or not, I think is very much an open question. And the source, New Mexico report is relying on the Legislative Finance Committee, which is the ultimate arbiter of a lot of, uh, you know, the successes or failures of New Mexico public policy.
Yeah, Paul, you know, uh, the way, the way I look at that is, uh, not all, not all programs do what they, do what you want them to do. And so yes, is, is this the answer? You know, we have a complicated, uh, we have both a very simple and a very complicated problem when it comes to drug use on our streets in Albuquerque and how we handle that. And you know, lack of consequences and the fact that a lot of the people, if you ask them and they get asked, increasingly Albuquerque is a place for, uh, burgeoning kind of YouTube filmmakers to come and document what's going on. They'll say, well, why don't you go to a shelter? Why didn't go in a program? Cause I like doing drugs. So, you know, always behavioral health doesn't necessarily translate into, you know, success, uh, and believe me, drug, drug problems are a big thing. And you know, I, I just hearken back Paul to, uh, what later became DARE, Drug Abuse Resistance Education. Okay. In sixth grade, we had a police officer came with this board that had every kind of drug and pill and drug paraphernalia. And I swear, not one of us had ever thought about any of that stuff as a possibility in our life until that was put before us. And so I would say, I don't believe that, uh, in any way that caused me to, uh, to, uh, undertake a lot, a life of substance abuse. But you know, not all programs are effective is the bottom line. So.
Yeah, yeah. Before, uh, making such a huge deal out of this program, one way or the other, it might behoove, uh, you to understand whether this is actually a program that is really helping people. And you know, look, I am not, uh, of the opinion that behavioral health and the inner workings of the human mind are simple things. And especially when you're obviously dealing with, uh, probably people with drug problems, people with, uh, serious mental health issues. To expect the government of all things to come in and really try to, uh, help address that. Now, CYFD is a similar story in a lot of ways. And, uh, I don't have, there, there are plenty of areas where we can say, you and I could say, you know, we pretty much got the answers to what ails New Mexico. I think behavioral health and CYFD, there are some things that are pretty obvious and evident, especially on CYFD, like not sending kids back to, uh, deeply troubled, uh, family members, which the governor to her credit just did. But on the other hand, uh, the ultimate solution, once you get government involved in somebody's behavioral health and mental issues or a family unit or lack thereof, you know, kids and stepdads and stepmoms and all that. It's very difficult and fraught with peril and government doesn't do a lot of things, a lot of easy things. Well, let alone hard things.
Yes. And Paul, uh, along that, I don't, I didn't know if I was going to say that, but you brought that up. I had a psychology professor at New Mexico State, Little Cow College to the south of Albuquerque. And, uh, his statement was, he thought that before you, that you ought to have a license to become parents. And before you could do that, you had to prove that you could train a rat. And so I was like, whoa, you know, at first that hit you, but the point is that, uh, you know, it's almost like the biblical, uh, quote about if, uh, if you've done well with small things, you will be given big things and, uh, government doesn't work that way. We have an idea, there's that idea again, and we don't know if it works, but we're going to go all in on it. And then if it doesn't work, uh, it'll take us a couple of decades to figure that out. And then, you know, before we try something new, as opposed to government is not good at trying things on a small scale and see if and it works before it blows, uh, blows it out into the, the big spending.
All right. Well, I thought that was, uh, you know, something worth doing because our governor, when she does get national attention, now, obviously she says a lot of things at the, you know, to the state level media. When they do talk to her or try to ask her any tough questions, which is very rare. Uh, I mean, uh, really we get much more, uh, from the national media when the governor decides to, go on to complain about Medicaid cuts or, or something of the like.
Hey, Pauline, you know, I have seen this. They don't like to either, I think it's mutual. They don't like to talk to her and she doesn't like to talk to them on the local media. So they just kind of ignore each other.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Well, uh, uh, last week I discussed the recession slash depression that our film industry is in, not just ours, but, uh, the industry across at least the United States. And presumably there are challenges at the international level of the Hollywood film industry. My opinion piece on that topic appeared in the Albuquerque Journal on Sunday. It made a lot of the similar points, uh, I just, the idea that we have, uh, an industry that's down from 740 million annually to 323 million annually in terms of spending here with a 40% subsidy available to them. And then we've, uh, heavily subsidized Santa Fe Studios. We, as in the state and the, uh, the Santa Fe County, uh, governments, both. And yet that is up for sale and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll see what interest there is in Santa Fe Studios. But clearly, uh, there, if this was, you know, if this was like a, uh, somebody low balling and selling some priceless asset off, you would probably hear very quickly that several bidders are interested in Santa Fe Studios. Well, uh, you know, it's only been a few weeks, but so far, uh, we haven't heard much of anything. Will one of the big Hollywood studios come in? Not if my reading of the current film market is, is accurate. So we'll, we'll see. It's just, uh, we, uh, need to reevaluate whether we're going to, as a people, as a state, pour money into favored businesses that the politicians think are hunky dory and great. And that a lot of other states are actually involved with, or maybe, just maybe we could, uh, create a regime of lower taxes, reasonable regulations and a highly qualified workplace, workforce and, uh, actually be attractive to business, uh, from the get go. That would be nice.
Yeah, Paul, and I'm, uh, I, I'm always fascinated by how industries work and the business models that get put in. And I did a little bit of thinking about this and, uh, you know, the big change that has hit Hollywood was the fact that we now have streaming any, everywhere. You know, the big value does not go through theaters ever. Back when I was growing up and we had, uh, four channels, the three networks and a, a public, uh, public TV station. There was very limited opportunities for reruns or syndication hadn't even been invented. Well, now there's so much older content. New content is faced with the competition of not only other new content. That's all it used to be, which new movie compared to other new movie. Now, if they're not better than the old stuff that's out there that has hundreds or, you know, hundreds of episodes, it's not going to be very profitable or get much play. And so, uh, yeah, this, this could be a very structural thing, like what do we, what do we like to say? Speaking of imprecise words, this is the new normal. But, uh, you know, we've seen a lot that happened and I do think COVID, uh, certainly got people out of the habit of going to first run movies. And, uh, short, medium and long run series are way more popular than standalone movies. So when you talk about Hollywood, uh, you know, it's not, it's not the movie that's, that's king right now. It's, it tends to be the short run series. So, uh, it's, uh, it's very interesting, but, uh, to sum this up is, uh, we might have, uh, you know, invested in something that's much more of an analog prob, uh, product in a increasingly digital world in terms of, uh, the way things are going with the quote unquote Hollywood system.
Yeah, I, I think that is, uh, is quite possibly true and something that, again, not having to pay out those 40 cents on the dollar, uh, is a win for the taxpayers. Obviously, uh, we're in the red when it comes to Santa Fe Studios. Some of the other studios, uh, what, what was Albuquerque Studios and is now Netflix? They were not taxpayers subsidized directly. In fact, when Santa Fe Studios came along, uh, folks at Albuquerque Studios reached out to yours truly and said, hey, we were built privately. Yes, we benefit from the film subsidy, but, uh, now we have a film studio that's competing with us. That's also receiving taxpayer dollars directly in addition to the subsidies that we're all receiving. And sure enough, we did some work, uh, to kind of highlight that fact. And of course, now we've come full circle with the, uh, you know, who knows where Santa Fe Studios will go next? I mean, it could sit on the market. It could be, you know, heaven forbid bulldozed or something, uh, if this is a severe enough shift in the industry. But we won't go there just yet. So, uh, we've got our, uh, our buddy Deb Holland and we could, uh, we may have to create some kind of, uh, specific RGF oriented product to highlight Deb Holland's numerous looted, loony sayings, uh, that she is going to be unleashing on us either speaking or more likely tweeting. Because, you know, as bad as she is at the, the tweeting game, uh, her in front of a microphone and heaven forbid Deb Holland would have to answer any tough questions. You know, as bad as, uh, Michelle Lujan Grisham was at Face the Nation, could you imagine Deb Holland? Ooh, uh, anyway, she posted the Anyway, she posted the, this following tweet. Millionaires and billionaires only care about one thing, themselves. The people that put us in this mess aren't going to get us out. Too many families fall through the cracks. As governor, I bring valuable experience and proven leadership to fix this broken system. Now, yet again, you get into one of those vague language issues.
What is the system we're gonna fix?
I, I believe the capitalist.
That's sort of what I think is like, there's all this capitalism. We need to get rid of that.
Now, remember, this is a woman running for governor. Now, you know, millionaires, shoot, after all the inflation we've seen in the last few years, millionaires, I'd still gladly choose the life of a millionaire, but, uh, very, uh, you know, a, a lot of people, if you really add up all of their assets are indeed millionaires. Even in New Mexico, a relatively impoverished state. Now, we know, uh, we talked about it just recently that there's only one billionaire in the state of New Mexico and he happens to run a solar company. So I don't know if Deb's annoyed with the gentleman that's Ron Corio, who is according to, I believe it's Forbes Magazine, the only billionaire in the state of New Mexico. Now, the people that put us in this mess aren't going to get us out. And again, is she talking about millionaires and billionaires? And what mess are we talking about? Yeah, you're, we're just supposed to know what mess. Too many families fall through the cracks. Okay. Uh, you know, your buddy, uh, and I, I'm just assuming here that Deb Holland and Michelle Lujan Grisham are broadly speaking on good terms. Now, Michelle Lujan Grisham could be on bad terms with Iraq because she is not a very likable person from everything I hear about her. So, you know, Deb Holland and Michelle Lujan Grisham may, may not personally like each other very much, but, uh, their policies are, are very copacetic. And then, uh, as governor, I bring valuable experience and proven leadership to fix this broken system, which again, what broken system?
Yeah. And what's broken? You know, Paul, all she needed to do is put oligarchs in there and she would have sounded just like Bernie Sanders. So it's like, uh, who also is good at saying stuff that, you know, has limited definition and not a whole lot of what exactly are we talking about here? And what exactly are you thinking that could be done to fix this? So.
Yeah. And the, uh, the rejoinder to all this is, uh, that when she entered the Biden administration, Deb Holland did cause some waves. And including Forbes Magazine again, which looked at her finances and found that as a 64 year old attorney, she had zero assets to her name. Now, that is almost mind numbingly unbelievable in the sense that, you know, you're, you're assuming that this woman, yes, I realize she's part of native and pueblo culture, but, uh, she probably has a car. Uh, she probably has a house unless she lives out on Laguna Pueblo lands, which that case, uh, she may not have her own house. But you're talking a 60 plus year old woman who, uh, has studied, uh, to be an attorney and has no assets. That's a, that's quite a, quite a statement there.
Yes. Uh, yeah. And, uh, yeah, also Paul, presumably she has some retirement accounts from her government kind of, uh, things. But yeah, that is, uh, that is, that is, uh, a lot of times it's shocking how much, uh, political figures can accumulate Nancy Pelosi while they're in office. But this one, yeah, to not have accumulated anything, that, that is a pretty, pretty strange. And she, and as you point out, being an attorney, she's been in a lot of high placed positions for a long time, you know, in terms of, uh, things going on, but evidently the money didn't stick.
Yeah. And you wonder, gosh, uh, what, who is Deb Holland's financial advisor? Maybe she doesn't have one because she doesn't have any assets, but that's a, that's a heck of a thing for somebody in that age group to, or really any age group above, say, 25 years old. The governor has stated that a special session is coming. We've heard September, but it will likely be this fall, probably not during balloon fiesta unless the governor has even more tone deaf than I would think. But, uh, we're looking at some of the things that she is planning to do, which includes reinforcing the state's Medicaid and food assistance programs in response to the federal budget bill. Now, it is worth noting that that bill doesn't actually take effect, uh, in the terms of the Medicaid cuts. It's one of the frustrating things about these policies is that they don't necessarily just say, all right, this whole thing takes effect on X date. No, they try to manipulate the, the good and the bad and make it, uh, so you're not dealing with some of the bad, what they perceive as the bad things, uh, immediately. Anyway, uh, those Medicaid cuts are not coming for, going to take effect for a couple of years. So the governor is really trying to get out in front of this one. I think it's more political messaging than anything. Enhancing criminal penalties for felons convicted of possessing a firearm. Okay. Uh, we'll see if the liberals are willing to engage with that. And then prohibiting New Mexico cities and counties from entering into agreements with federal, the federal government on immigration detention facilities. So those are the three things that according to the Albuquerque Journal are likely to be discussed in the special session. I have no issue with the firearm thing as long as they stick to felons convicted of possessing a firearm. I find that one to be common sense.
And again, we already have laws on the books right now. So is this an enforcement issue or, you know, is a new law really needed? We'll see.
Yeah. Uh, the one that's really interesting here is actually this, uh, cities and counties, uh, entering into agreements with the federal government. Now, you know, if they don't build or maintain immigration detention centers in New Mexico, they will simply do that in other places. So, I mean, you, you're losing out on some number of jobs, some number of tax dollars flowing in here, but I understand the political posturing here. So that's, that's about where, where I see this thing heading. But, uh, it'll be interesting. Any, any thoughts on any of those?
Well, just really to look at this, this is like a big snoozer. It doesn't even, you're like, why do you do a special session for this?
The answer is you don't.
Yeah. Because like you say, the, the cuts don't come. We have a session coming up, work with that. And then the other point that you said is, has she been talking to the others in her party that haven't been really very cooperative in doing her bidding, you know, as they were early in, uh, her gubernatorial terms. So, uh, or are we just gonna go up there and, uh, fight and do their, uh, pay the legislators to go up there and, uh, do their signee die and go home? I don't know. I don't, surely they wouldn't do that. And I know, I don't want to call you surely, Paul, but surely they will have done some work ahead of time, uh, to, if you're going up there to make a big, uh, political show on some of these things, you're gonna have to pass something, but we'll see. But again, these are like, okay. Uh, I really do think that, uh, that guns are enforcement, you know, enforcement is law enforcement and follow through in the courts is where we fall short about crime in general in New Mexico. So is another law gonna help? I don't know. The other thing's a long time in the future. So, uh,
Yeah. According to, uh, our friends at Google AI, uh, Medicaid cuts under the big beautiful bill are not fully clear, but provisions have specific, some provisions have specific timelines. Work requirements are slated to begin in December of 2026 for most states with outreach starting earlier, possibly September 26. Other funding reductions will start in 2028. So yeah, we're not exactly in need of a special session to be held just a few months before the upcoming 30 day session. It does seem like the governor is really trying to, you know, hot, just basically make this an issue. She is trying to highlight, oh, the whore, oh, New Mexicans are losing their healthcare. Oh, this, you know, it's very much geared towards trying to advertise at taxpayer expense, of course, that this is something she cares about and that she thinks the Republicans are being nasty people about.
Yeah. And there's certainly a constituency that hates everything about ICE and they hate, uh, enforcement of federal law with regard to immigration. But yeah, let's say that passes, we shut a couple of things down, that, that comes and goes relatively quickly. And as you say, it might make it, uh, you know, if you're the, oh, we shouldn't have any ICE enforcement, it may make it worse, not better for those that, uh, who are in the country legally under, you know, the current enforcement regime. So yes, uh, I don't know, there's things we could do, maybe that would have more impact than this, but we'll, we'll see how this goes. So, uh, that's a, you know, what do they use to call it? Must see TV. This is much, this is not must see political theater. I don't think.
Yeah. Well, we'll see, uh, how things go and, uh, when this special session is called normally. And again, uh, you know, we have all these open meetings laws. We have all this allegedly open government, uh, you know, kind of, uh, infrastructure in New Mexico. And yet, uh, more often than not, when you do have something happen in a special session, it's already baked in long before the session begins. Obviously that would not.
Until recently.
Last year. Yeah. But clearly they have gone behind the scenes and, uh, tried to get some unanimity, uh, at least among the Democratic Party in order to push their ideas and policies through. But, all right. This unfortunately will not get nearly the amount of time and discussion because it's a new website called vote with your feet.net. And I highly encourage people, you can go on to the link on airs of enchantment.com. It was set up by our friend, Jaclyn, uh, Pickrell, who is, uh, involved with the Rio Grande Foundation, but it was, uh, set up for another organization. And I just want to highlight how neat this website is. You can go and find out how money moves. Uh, you can go and find out how, uh, people are moving and you can find out, uh, what, you know, the political makeup of various states may be. Uh, when you go to, for example, the moving map, a lovely map shows up of the United States with, uh, how many people move from state to state between 2012 and 2022? And you go and you see shock of shocks. New Mexico is in a red format, which means that you're losing people. So specifically during that time period, New Mexico lost 46,593 net domestic migrants. Arizona gained 483,368. Colorado gained 194,187. Texas gained 1,268,227,000. Uh, so just as per the usual, New Mexico is in that unenviable position of being a place where people are moving from, uh, and that's not surprising. Then you go over to the money maps and, uh, it's conveniently showed that you have, uh, little stacks of cash where they have a little illustration of stacks of cash moving from one state to the other.
What do they call them? The drug trade? Fat stacks?
Yes. Uh, now this is, this is perhaps even more depressing, uh, than the other number because New Mexico is in kind of the moderately bad, uh, area of net adjusted gross income. This is all you based on IRS data. A negative $474 million. Uh, so that, that's what left New Mexico, whereas Arizona, let me see here, 29.75 billion came into Arizona, 54.467 billion came into Texas. So yeah, we're not quite at the level of, of, uh, California or New York where you saw massive, massive outflows. I'm not sure how many assets we would have to flow out of New Mexico. That's one of the things about being poor and consistently poor, unlike California and New York, which have actually been very wealthy states. And in a certain sense, remain wealthy states, uh, even though they are hemorrhaging people and cash. But this website is fantastic. We are going to have somebody on at some point to discuss it and how it was put together and how it can be used. But, uh, it is going to be built out further. And again, it is vote with your feet.net. Uh, so check that out. It is full of information.
It's awesome. And that, that IRS data set is fantastic. But let me just say, I, I've, I've seen that for many years now, but this is the best interface I've seen of that data, meaning you can really figure it out. And just, you know, uh, as you were driving over here preparing, uh, I was preparing for the show, Paul, and I was like, okay. I looked at the AGI, the adjusted gross income, and it flowed from New Mexico to every surrounding state. And I said, just as, uh, just as an experiment, the states that are worse than us in terms of the color, like California, New Mexico, yes, indeed, net, uh, net AGI did come from New York state and California into New Mexico. Not a lot, but some. So, uh, yeah, this is a very, very interesting data to look at indeed.
Yeah. Uh, according to this, uh, we received 13,740 people from California. Contrary to other folks, I will say, welcome Californians. I hope you realize what screwed up your, your home state. It's time not to do that in New Mexico.
And not to bring your tofu, uh, fish taco eating ways and liberal policies.
Exactly. Or further amplify, I will say, 820 million, uh, dollars flowed from California to New Mexico. So, yes, uh, New Mexico is not necessarily the very least attractive state in a lot of ways. We certainly are more attractive to, uh, people moving around than California, New York and Illinois. But, uh, we, we suffer and, you know, part of that I'm sure is we have lower costs, we have very beautiful weather. There's a lot of advantages here in New Mexico that we don't always talk about, but, uh, they are part of the American Southwest. And if we just amplified those rather than hindering them, we would be in much better shape as a state. Well, we're gonna leave it there. Thanks for listening to this week's episode. Find all episodes at tippingpointsnm.com or at the Rio Grande Foundation's YouTube channel. Subscribe to the show at Apple, Stitcher, or tell Google Home to play Tipping Point New Mexico. Thanks to Path3 Marketing for producing this show.